Order the Whitfield Town Council meeting Monday, November 27th, 2023, at 5 o'clock at the Municipal Building at 150 East Monroe Street in Whitfield. We do have a quorum. They stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Holly Atkins.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is approval of the agenda. I would need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we need to amend this agenda tonight to remove the closed session.
So we have a motion to remove the closed session at the end of the meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is ready to discuss it? Right here, none, this will be a roll call vote.
Y'all.
Patterson, aye. Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Johnson.
Y'all. Moving forward, there can be a recess at 6:00 PM if necessary. Next is a consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the regular Town Council meeting of November 13th, 2023. I'll need a motion.
Second.
Have a motion accepted, then another second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Anybody in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Motion passes. Next is citizen period. If anybody here that would like to speak, council. Next on our agenda, we're going to have a review, the ordinance number 1427, and ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 6, fire prevention and protection, and amending and reenacting Chapter 9. Often since miscellaneous, Article 3, air pollution control. By renaming the article and by removing the following sections, Section 9 to 76, definitions, Section 9 to 77, penalty, Section 9 to 78, authority and declaration of policy, Section 9 to 79, relationship to state rules, Section 9, 80, powers and responsibilities of air pollution control officer, Section 9, 81, opening burning, Section 9, 82, smoke or other visibility emissions, and Section 9, 83, emergency procedure, and amending and reenacting Chapter 11, police, Article 3, alarm systems, Section 11, 44, penalties for false alarms of the code and of the town of Whitfield, Virginia. We want now welcome Fire Chief Chris Slim to go over that with us and answer any questions. Thank you, sir.
Hey, good evening, everybody. First of all, hope you had a good Thanksgiving, and on behalf of my staff, thank you for the bonuses you gave us, by the way. That was greatly appreciated by all of us, so thank you very, very much.
Very well earned.
I appreciate that a lot. I've never worked in a municipality and got a bonus, so I was like, wow, this is great. Thank y'all. I won't go through what I went through all that last time with you. Just wanted to get in front of you real quick to tell you, we had a little bit of discussion at the end of the review I did last time with you about the being able to do the burn ban. And we went back and we did a little work on that section and put some, I needed to change a couple words in it and wordsmithed a little bit and put some different reference in there to state code. We have done that in this. It was asked if we had the authority to do that without this being in there. I believe there does exist. We did some digging for that authority, but it doesn't, it doesn't say how you deal with people that violated. So if we put this in here now, we have also a way, we have some teeth to it, if that makes sense. So I will tell you, we've had, at least since the county put the burn ban in, we've had, I think, three illegal burns that we've been to. Two were in the county, which the county dealt with, and one was in town, and it's a repeat offender that we go to often. So we have had to deal with a few of those. So, but I appreciate that the Cherry has put this into ordinance form in five minutes, what would have took me five days, so I greatly appreciate her doing that, too. So it's, you know, again, for your review, I just want to remind you, if you would like, I'll be happy to meet with any of you one-on-one. If you really want to get down in the very weeds of this and spend as much time as you want, I'll be glad to bore you to death as long as you want with that, because it can be kind of dry. So, but just, you know, if you want to do that, we maybe, I think it's your next council meeting, we're maybe looking to take action, if you guys feel comfortable with that. But please, if you want to get into the weeds, I'll be glad to talk with you one-on-one. Is there any questions tonight I can answer for you while I'm here, if you might have seen or something I could clarify for you?
I think you've been pretty clear on everything.
Okay, well, please call me if you want, I don't mind. I'd be happy to take as much time as you may like to make sure you all are good with it, so I want you to understand what you know when you're voting on, because get asked by somebody, you know, you can give them the... Yes, ma'am, go ahead, please.
When you say you have a repeat offender, what steps do you take for that?
The one we've had out there before, I know the building inspector's dealing with that person, they've got some, I think, some code, other code violations that they're working with. We haven't been able to catch him in the act of actually lighting the material, which has been a problem for us, but we have, or I have. He has been charged, this person, with an illegal tire dump, so that's getting ready to go to court. Sergeant Sadler did that, and in fact, I've got a subpoena to go testify on that, because we had a fire out there that got into his tires. And while we were there, I started counting, I said, ah, we got a violation, so they came out and took care of that. So we're trying our best to get that one resolved. I know the town manager's been working, and so is assistant town manager, too, on this one particular situation quite a bit.
Well, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank y'all very, very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, too.
All right, thank y'all, have a nice night.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Next on the agenda is to consider an appointment to the Joint Industrial Development Authority of With County, known as the JIDA, to fill the expired term of Mr. David Kous. His term expires November, or expired, November 10th, 2023. Ms. Carvin, town clerk, may have a comment to do or...
No, you just have the two applications before you for consideration of appointment to the JIDA.
I'd like to make a motion to consider Ms. Vicki Parks.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Got any dialogue?
I'd like to share a little bit what I did learn about her, that I was very impressed that she held many title roles. She sort of started from the bottom and worked her way up, which I admire that. Also that she has worked in backgrounds of different hospitals, and also she has some sister hospitals that she works with, has several contacts that way. I think she said that she had six, unless she... And she wants the town to be strong, that meant a lot to make her, her wording on the strong part. She wanted to be able to also help and work on that. I like the word teamwork that she used.
I like the fact that she has a solid business background as well. And I'm just going to reiterate, I like the fact that she started from the bottom and worked her way to the top, so she knows what it is to have to work hard to make it to the top and become a CEO. I think that says a lot about her character and...
I believe she is a very strong candidate.
My only concern is that if one comes up and says, you're moving, I know you can ask all day long how to move you, but...
In the event that that does happen, I think we have other candidates that we can look at. I think you keep their applications on file, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so if she does happen to have to move, she certainly will have someone else that we can... Anybody else have any more questions?
Just to add for information purposes only, the JIDA previously has the hospital representative on there. And this would be the second person who's involved with community hospital, if she should get the nomination.
I agree that both candidates, in my opinion, are very qualified. Appreciate you saying that about the, about moving and the response is just as good as far as moving. Hospital, I kind of know how that works. I don't know what the JIDA, they have any problems with that, that's not our concern, per se. You know, as far as having two people from the same part in the town, I know that they don't have any regulations that I know of. I think she can also bring fresh new IDA, CDA as well. Somebody of fresh face. Any other dialogue?
If we're voting on, I have to mention, in fact, it would be a conflict.
Sure, council agrees, we can, we're sure that he's...
That's, you know, it's at the pleasure of the council to do that. I'm not sure if they have any regulations and stuff, what the board members have to be.
I'm not going to hold it against her. I mean, the lady does have a job, just like everybody else, and I'm not going to hold it against her if she gets promoted or has to move. I really don't think that should be a factor. She's willing to volunteer and put the time and the work in, and to me, that means a lot.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, since there's already someone on a hospital board that works for the hospital, that would be a conflict. If Mr. Manley, it's over the JIDA, would consider...
I don't know it to be a conflict, Ms. Corbin.
I don't really know, because we just have two appointees to that board.
The other one was appointed by...
It's a county, yes, it is a county appointment. The other one is a county appointment.
Is there any, is there any way during recess that someone can contact Mr. Manley? Mr. Freeman, could you do that?
I can try if you'd like.
I mean, I don't think that, I'd hate to, you know, if that's a possibility, just at recess, not right now, I mean, just at recess or however.
We don't necessarily have a recess, right?
Yeah, one schedule, maybe not.
No, we always have that one schedule.
Or Mr. Freeman, you can text me, whatever.
I can text you if y'all don't mind me using my phone.
Yeah, why don't you?
If that's okay, we will.
Had the pleasure of working with that candidate. And she's everything that she says she is and everything she says she does.
I know you spoke in the pally before, different times in meetings and things like that.
As I said, I think we've got two, two good candidates, and this is what we need to figure out is, that's the one question that we need to... I'm pretty sure their office probably closed at 5:00.
We need to make sure we remain unbiased as well. We need to be unbiased as well.
And I don't, I don't know, I mean, this is, this is just a suggestion, maybe on this forum, maybe that is a box, maybe we could check from now on, is just put a little stipulation on there, is you have a conflict of interest, or do you know of, of course, you know, somehow wording on there, what do you suggest, Mr. Castle?
Well, a conflict of interest in the legal standpoint is, is different from what I think you're talking about. From a legal standpoint, the conflict of interest would arise from a personal interest in transaction. You can have a personal interest in a transaction two ways. You can personally have it, or a close family member that resides in your home could have it. The other way that it can exist is if you own, if you have ownership of a business that has a conflict of interest and something's happened. So you can't vote on things that benefit yourself or benefit your business. So that from a legal standpoint, that's what a conflict of interest is. And the way that you would deal with that, if anything came up from the joint IDA involved with the hospital, and of course, those people that are on there would have to abstain. I did look up real quick to see it's a seven-member board, so that would not eliminate a quorum if that happened. That's all I think. So when I was analyzing your, from a legal standpoint, the question about a conflict of interest, that's where I would get concerned as well. I could see if you had multiple people from an organization on there, and then something came up that the hospital needed to benefit from, and then you could have a quorum because you have too many members, and that could be a problem.
Right.
But you have a seven-member board, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, it looks, I Googled that real quick to see how big that board is, so I don't think that would be an issue on there. So now, the, you know, the conflict of interest from a broader standpoint, beyond a legal standpoint, would just be, is there too much concentration of fault by having two people from one organization? And I think that's what, maybe what your town managers check. My question right now is just specifically pertaining to bylaws and to include a second candidate, that's not, that's not... I say, I say question, but you would ask it differently.
I think that's all we do. What else?
Okay.
Can we go on if we want to, until we get an answer, if we get one to see if that's okay?
So he's off, he'll be...
Mr. Freeman, is that okay? Go ahead, proceed until you hear something, maybe?
That's really up to you, I don't, I don't have any...
No, I mean, I was already saying it's not a conflict.
It's not a, it's not a legal conflict, I mean, conflict, I don't know what's in their bylaws and stuff. I could try to see if their bylaws are on, are posted.
Of course, because of what we could always vote if there's conflict, and we find out bylaws, and we do have a second candidate. I feel like they probably would have reached out to us, because I'm sure they keep abreast of things, knowing that we were ready to, and if there was, I feel like they would have reached out and let us know if it's a conflict.
I have never seen that in bylaw, in any bylaws that would exhibit those types of things, that does, I'm not really used to with JDA meetings. Their bylaws aren't fixed at all.
I recommend we move forward. All right, so we have a, we have a motion, and we have a second. And is there any further dialogue? No further dialogue? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Any opposed?
Does that need to be a roll call vote, or just a...
You know, I just checked, I have a favorite voting. So that motion passes? Moving forward, next is to consider appointment of Whitfield Building Code Appeals Board to fill the expired term of Mr. William Turner III, his term expired July 26, 2023, and the unexpired term of Mr. David Schmidt, term expires July 22nd, 2026.
Well, there's two applications before you, and there are two vacancies now on this board. Actually, there's, there are five vacancies, because we recently found out that Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Brad Litten are not able to serve on this board, because they also serve on the planning commission. And so those, that's a kind of a conflict there, because they're considered employees. So we had to take off Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Litten. And then you have Mr. Turner, and then town staff also wants to have two alternate members to this board. So after you appoint these two, there's still three more vacancies to be filled, and I think that there's some pending applications that will be coming for you at future meetings.
Okay, so this Mr. David Schmidt is not the one that cannot be on?
He can't be on. So the one term is a five-year term, Mr. Turner's, and it will expire July 26, 2028. It's a five-year term, and Mr. Schmidt, whichever, or if you pick either of these gentlemen to serve in his position, then they will fill Mr. Schmidt's unexpired term, and then they could be reappointed again for another five-year term. But to keep the staggered terms, one of them needs to be expiring July 26, 2026, and the other one will be expires July 26, 2028.
I'd like to...
You'll need to designate that in your motion, too, for the one for the five-year term, and for the three-year term.
I would like to make a motion to consider George Landon Sayers for the term of Mr. William Turner, which expired July 26, 2023. And I would like to also make a motion to consider Mr. Andy Sayers to pick up the term for Mr. David Schmidt, which expires July 26, 2023. All right, so I have a motion. Any two positions? I have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just have one question, I just want to make sure we got this right. For Landon Sayers, will his term expire 28?
Yes, 7/26/28.
Thank you.
I think they've given quite a bit to the table, and they've been to be assets for the board, if I'm saying...
And I really did enjoy the meeting, great session with that. Very important.
All right, so I have a motion.
That was my work.
Have a motion and a second. Ready for any discussion?
Could you repeat the motion, please?
Would you like for me to, in this court?
This court, please.
So the motion is for the term of Mr. Landon Sayers, he will fill the five-year term of William Turner expiring July 26, 2028, and Mr. Andy Sayers will fill the unexpired term of Mr. David Schmidt, and his term will expire July 26, 2026.
Thank you.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? And this is just a regular vote. All in favor? If you can, probably say aye. Aye as well, any opposed? Any here or none? A motion passes, congratulations, just wait for them. All right, next on the agenda is no business. So, hello, Mr. Freeman? All right, so moving forward, we have no new business reports. Ryan Freeman, town manager.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. This will be very brief, just a couple of announcements that I'd like to get out there, just in case folks in the public are following closely along with us. And a reminder that on December 2nd at 6:00 PM, the Downtown Whitfield Incorporated and their planning committees have put together a wonderful Christmas celebration called A Christmas Melody, that will conclude with the parade at 6:00 PM. But there is a day-long event starting at 10:00 AM at the Heritage Preservation Center, and then several events going on throughout the day in Withers Park. There's also a tree lighting ceremony at Withers Park at 5:30 PM for anyone interested in seeing that. So we just want to make sure folks were aware that it's always very well done, very well attended, and I know everyone is looking forward to it. And then just a couple of, these are just sort of look-aheads to things that we'll be, I'll say, tackling in the near future. Looking at January, when you all will recall back during the budgeting process last year, we talked about the master fee schedule being something we would look at annually, and we talked about that being a January review, and I know it hasn't been a full year since we did that, but we want to make that an annual thing, so we'll be asking our department heads over the course of the next month to review their areas again, and then bringing that back to you all again in January, as sort of a kickoff and a precursor to the budgeting process for next year. It's never too early to get started. We'll also need to take a very close look at water and sewer rates again. Last year, you know, we did do an increase on users of 25,000 gallons a month and above, and then the $1 increase on the per account, basically. So we'll be taking another look at those, and that'll, I think, needs to be an annual, an annual thing that happens sort of as we're kicking off the budgeting process, so we want to get that started this January. And then the other thing that our department heads will be looking at very closely in the next month is submitting to us their capital improvements requests and revisions. This is a document, excuse me, that will live every year, that will be reviewed every year, that looks out five years on all of their capital needs. Capital, in our case, being projects that are over $5,000, that have a life expectancy over five years. These are buildings, these are cars, these are automobiles, things like that, but large capital-intensive projects that have a long life expectancy. So we'll be asking them to look, take a quick look, not a quick look, but take another look at that. It seems like we literally just finished this, but it's, it's already upon us again. So just looking ahead, that's, that's kind of the way our, our January calendar sets up to kind of start, start us along in the, in the budgeting process. So just wanted to let you know that. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Upcoming meetings? Town clerk, Cherry Corbin, please.
I have just a few of those. The Tree Advisory Committee will meet on Thursday, December 7th, at 8:30 AM in Conference Room A here in the Municipal Building. The Joint Industrial Development Authority of With County will meet on Thursday, December 7th, at 3:00 PM here in the council chambers. And the next regular scheduled meeting of the Whitfield Town Council will be held on Monday, December 11th, at 5:00 PM here in the council chambers.
Moving forward with our agenda, we have miscellaneous and council member time. Come in here, Mr. Freeman.
I have anything to say.
Ms. Freeman?
Nothing.
It's time, thank you.
Ms. Sackens?
Second half.
Okay, that's right, we can... Ms. Johnson, you want to go while she's...
I'm sorry, I just, I'm sorry. I know that we had a concern about the trash near the library, and it sort of brought to my attention that it was again there, and I think without a container, again, not much, but if we could look at that. And then also, I know we had talked about this before, since we do have the budget coming up, didn't know if we could have some, look at informational TVs in the program areas to, on upcoming events and different things, and with the town, you know, what we've done, didn't know if that could be looked into. I know we've talked about that a little bit before, not necessarily for them to watch TV, but just an informational board for our, the town employees. We can look at that, maybe try to fit that in. Sort of maybe have like the newsletter on it and things like that, if that's a possibility. And I think that's it. And I think that's it.
I would like to revisit the employee recognition for the town's website, for departments to have the ability to recognize their employees, and if the employees are willing to have their photo and their name, and to be recognized on the town website. If they don't want their photo, at least their name and recognition for their accomplishments, I think that's something that all departments need to be able to do, is recognize their employees, and I think they should be recognized on our town website.
Do you see that maybe being each department head would, would find out who doesn't want their photo on there, or HR, or, I think it's red, I think.
That each department head can recognize, they can, if they want to go down the list, if they want to start momentum of the list, however they choose to do it, but all our employees need to have the opportunity to be recognized on the town website.
And sometimes I think before mayor town, that there also could maybe be a form, Mr. Freeman's like another form, but maybe a form of a release, you know, photo release, just a simple photo releasing form, that, you know, they may be using a commercial down the road or something. But they could always be like a photo release form, whether you want to picture, and some people are very sensitive to not having their picture taken, but just a thought.
And you are all new for, not all new, I'm new, y'all are all veteran members, so...
You had two red lights.
Y'all are veteran members, so I do not really know or understand the procedure for what we do for the Christmas celebration. Do we just show up and go to the events? What do we do as a council? What's the procedure? So as far as procedure-wise, we are invited to, and, 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 Charlie may want to come in any time, but we as council are invited to the tree lighting, which is in Withers Park, and it's at, what time's your only? 5:30. So there, there's a lot of children's events going on in the park, you know, parade and things of that nature, when they meet, see at Santa Claus and stuff like that. Is there music being played in the park this time? You don't want to see it, okay. So at, at 5 o'clock, we just kind of have a little mic, and we just invite the children that are in the park to kind of come over to the tree. If there's a singer or somebody that's on the stage, I'll ask them to kind of sing a Christmas song that the kids can be, you know, in with as they're migrating to that, and then basically it's a cut-down, a countdown, and we go to switch. Now, on the front of the parade, there are, is available to all of council, a horse and buggy, that we all get on that if we want to. I know that, I think you're talking about it again. You gonna be on it?
Not yet. Don't let you tell me now.
You said the other day you were going to be in a truck. You said the other day you were going to be in a truck. I would love to have all of council... Are you and Mr. Gilman and Ms. Patterson, or y'all want to? Yes.
Well, I didn't ask him.
A carriage, right?
Yeah, it's a horse-drawn carriage.
Okay. I think we can all get up in that carriage and...
Oh, that's what it's for. That's what we're, that's what we all always do, all of council, or those who want to get on there.
You know me, I love horses.
Will you come, and we'll all deck the house in the carriage? So that means, so that means, when, if whoever's at the tree lighting, we will have, the Downtown Withfall or the PD will be there, put us in their little carts, and get us down to the other end of town.
Blue lights and red lights. Get us there.
Yeah, well, because there's no, you know, all the streets are blocked by that time. So that's what, so that's what, is that, do you have anything else? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, any, I do not have any items for...
I just want to make one, one thing I, I should have mentioned, and I did not, Mayor Taylor, just another quick announcement. The Halligoodney Rock House Museum will have its open house on Friday from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. It's free admission with light refreshment, so this will be their, I think their official open house for the reopening of the Rock House Museum.
Well, I will now, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And if it's okay, we can go ahead and vote on this, fine. Once I found out it's not going to be a conflict.
Okay, I think we're going to vote on it. Voted yes.
Okay.
He was saying...
Code ball.
All right, we are now...